Good evening. If you could all take your seats, that would be most appreciated. Welcome to the Monday, September 22nd meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you're all here with us. I'd like to call the meeting in order if I could and ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call?
Mr. Baruch. Oh. Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Snyder. He's not here either. Mr. Z.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here. Thank you. Mr. Snyder is on work travel and Mr. Baruch is also out of town, so anyway, we'll carry on without them. We need to adopt a meeting agenda, although I think there's a minor change in the agenda. Is that right, Mr. Shields?
Mayor Tarter, one thing that has been discussed is adding to the agenda under appointments, the appointment to the Joint Steering Committee for the George Mason High School Campus Planning Steering Committee. And the appointments would be for the mayor and the vice mayor to serve as the members of that Joint Steering Committee representing the city council with Mary Beth Conley, Council Member Conley, as the alternate member for council.
So we'll go ahead and add that to other business, we would like to at least?
If we could.
Yes, okay. So do we have a motion to adopt the agendas modified or amended by Mr. Shields?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda as modified.
Wait a second. Anyone?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Great, thank you. Okay, so we have, it looks like, a few proclamations this evening, including one declaring October 5th through 11th Fire Prevention Week. Is that right? So let's go ahead and read that.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. Whereas the City of Falls Church is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fires are serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest fire risk or risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012, according to National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 365,000 home fires. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas three out of five fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working, usually because batteries are missing, disconnected, or dead. Whereas Falls Church City residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and in each level of the home, including alert devices that meet the needs of the people who are deaf or hard of hearing. Whereas Falls Church City residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Falls Church City first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Falls Church City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase the safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2014 Fire Protection Week theme, working smoke alarms saves lives, test yours every month, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Whereas the 2014 Fire Protection -- sorry, I just read that, I'm sorry. Therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2014 as Fire Protection Week throughout this city. And I urge all the people of the City of Falls Church to test their smoke alarms at least every month by pushing the test button, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Falls Church Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2014.
Mayor Tarter, I want to thank you for that proclamation. And I'd like to introduce Fire Marshal Tom Polera. And he is joined by our new Chief of the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department, Kevin Henry, and the Assistant Chief of the Volunteers, Mr. Brendan Meehan. And I would like to allow them a moment to speak, but I would just note that we're very happy to begin working with our new chief, Mr. Henry. He has 15 years of experience in public safety and many years of experience here in Station 6 volunteering and increasing leadership roles with Station 6 here in Falls Church. He began his tenure as chief in August and enjoyed very much working with him. If I could introduce him and let him make a few remarks, and then he'll come up to have a picture taken with the proclamation with council.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, members of the city council, and fellow residents and citizens of Falls Church. It is my privilege to be here. I look forward to working with you much more closely this year and for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank all of you. I don't know if you had anything to say. We welcome any additional comments you have, but I was going to -- go ahead.
I would just like to add what the chief left out was Fire Prevention Week open house at Fire Station 6 will be this Saturday at the fire station from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and all are invited.
That sounds great. I've spent many years going to that. My kids always sent you -- I don't know if you still do the hose, where they have the hose to squirt the little house. That's how I spend a lot of fun. But on a serious note, I want to thank you all for all the hard work you do to the City of Falls Church, particularly as it relates to volunteering. I know it's a substantial effort on everyone's part, and you do a fantastic job for our city, and we're all greatly appreciative of all your good work. If you'd like, maybe you could all step forward and we could take a photo with the proclamation. The open house is October 11th. October 11th, from what time?
From 10:00 before.
10:00 before on October 11th. Great. Well, let's go ahead and hand the proclamation. We'll get our photo taken here.
I'll read it from here.
Sure, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas Virginians are encouraged to make an intentional and united effort to be of service to their communities, and whereas the Edward and Kennedy Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21, 2009, designated September 11th to be observed as an annual national day of service and remembrance. And whereas Day to Serve is an annual event that transcends political and religious differences to unite people of all faiths, races, cultures, beliefs, and backgrounds with the shared goal of helping those in need. And whereas between September 11th through the 28th, 2014, Virginians are encouraged to make a concerted effort to feed the hungry, clean up neighborhoods, and improve communities by recognizing and participating in Day to Serve activities. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service is celebrating the 20-year anniversary of AmeriCorps through a year of service that culminated on September 12, 2014, when all new AmeriCorps members began their service. And whereas the Virginia Office of Voluntarism and Community Service hosted its annual volunteerism and service conference on September 11th through the 12th, 2014. And whereas on September 11th, 2014, numerous service projects throughout Richmond kicked off Virginia's Day to Serve activities. And whereas all citizens, faith groups, businesses, and community organizations are invited to support and participate in efforts to collect food, plant trees, clean up neighborhoods and parks, and address critical needs in their own backyards. And whereas Falls Church is known for its strong sense of community and its volunteers who give an amazing amount of hours of service to unite our citizens for a wide variety of purposes.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby recognize each day during September 11th through the 28th, 2014, as Day to Serve in the City of Falls Church, and call this observation to the attention of all our citizens. Is there anyone here, Barb Cram or others, to accept this proclamation? No, I know Ms. Cram was pretty influential in getting this going on, and I'm sorry she's not here to attend this evening, but please send her our regards. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on. The next item on the agenda, are there any -- thank you all for coming this evening and for all your hard work to the city. Do we have any oaths to administer to members of boards and commissions, Madam Clerk?
We don't.
Okay. So with respect to public comments, the next item on the agenda, we've got, it looks like, four speakers. You can either speak now, if you'd like, or you can speak when the item that you came to speak about is on the agenda, so that would be your choice. If you could, keep your comments to three minutes and give us your name and your address. Our first speaker is Lyndi Hockenberry. She -- there she is. Would you like to speak now, or?
Oh, why not?
Okay. And the next speaker is Tom Clinton.
It's the kids also. Hi, I'm Lyndi Hockenberry, 1208 Seton Lane, and I'm not representing the Planning Commission tonight. I'm working at my most favorite job of working with young people, the job that I've had for about 45 years now. But anyway, about 2000, when I was first running for office, I went around talking, listening to my constituents, as you all have, and one of the most important constituent groups that I had were the young people. And I said, "What would you like to see in Falls Church?" Well, they really, really wanted some sort of a skateboard feature or park in order to, you know, do some tricks and use their skateboards and have some fun. 14 years later, I'm so glad that we're finally having a small feature at the West End Park. And just am very anxious to have that go into place. We've had, six years ago or so, some temporary equipment that was used all in different parks, and it was really very, very popular. One of the reasons I'm very happy about the West End location, though, is that it's the center of the city. It's on the kids' way to and from school. Let's hope they don't skateboard on their way to school, but after school, you know, when they get their frozen yogurt. But it's very -- it'd be very safe, very visible, once we were going to propose one at Cavalier Park, which I would have never, never, never supported. That would have been too hidden. Skateboarding is still very popular with the age group of about fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and there's many in my neighborhood and, you know, that I know of through the school groups and everything. We did a -- I had Mr. Dipple, now Dr. Dipple, seventh grade civics teacher, and Mr. Buck, who is also a seventh grade civics teacher, do an unscientific survey in their civics classes where they learn about civic participation. And it ran around 40, 45 percent of the kids in the seventh grade who do skateboard and would very much like a feature such as this. So I just wanted to speak in support of that because we do have a couple of young people here to speak, had some others that wanted to come, but they had Boy Scout meetings and football practice, and, you know, their lives are about as busy as ours are. But it's a significant constituency in your -- in our wonderful city. And furthermore, I told them they could maybe get retroactive grades in their civics, you know, from last year. They're eighth grade now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyndi. You sure your interest isn't for yourself on the skateboard park?
(laughing) All right. All right. Mr. Tom Clinton, followed by Kate and Sam Clemmick. Mr. Clinton, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and city council members. My name is Tom Clinton. I live at 711 Hillwood Avenue, and I serve as the city's Commissioner of Revenue. I'm here tonight to unfortunately announce that I'm closing the Falls Church City DMV Select office effective Friday, October 31st, unless the city manager or the city council can provide the space and the manpower I need to properly run that office and the commissioner's office. I have repeatedly noted the heavy workload in the two offices and the need for help in my annual budget narratives, my budget overview and work sessions. I found one the other day from 2011 where I gave, you know, tables and charts and solutions to the situation, and there's not been a lot of change. The budget was passed this year without additional help, and then the Vienna Select office closed entices. And I knew we would not be able to complete another fiscal year under these extreme conditions. Frankly, my staff and I are burning out. The city was not under a hiring freeze as positions were added in IT, Economic Development, and the Planning Department, to name a few. And the Police Department was allowed to send four candidates to the academy when there are only two vacancies. And it appears that we'll have another surplus. If you look at last week's 2014 year-end report, you'll see that all revenue categories in my office are up. And that includes a 7.2 percent increase in personal property and a 3 percent increase in sales, meals, B-Pole, and other taxes. And we did all that while performing 25,000 DMV transactions in the same small space with the same small staff. Everyone has seen the long lines. It's not been a secret. Because the city eliminated the paid space in the news press and the city calendar years ago, I've had to hire a part-time outreach coordinator to get the word out to our citizens and businesses, telling them what they need to do to be in compliant with our codes and to make sure that they pay their fair share of taxes and not learn this the hard way by getting parking tickets. The most recent thing was the city's IT department was recently relocated to the Water Department's old space on the east wing of City Hall, which is the busiest and most visible wing in the building. This space holds -- this large space holds 10 to 12 employees, and the IT staff is not that big. And it has a large public counter, and those folks don't meet with the public. Often, they're not at their desks, but they're out working in the field. I've never seen an IT department on the first floor of a public or private sector building. And part of the challenge with our needs and situations, I don't have the same access to the city manager as general managers and division directors do, who meet with them regularly. So I'm at a disadvantage. And it's hard to do your job at the high level that my office does without the tools needed to do the job. I think our customer service, new initiatives, and results speak for themselves. Investing in a revenue generating office can only improve our financial situation. We run a lean office. Last summer, I had an unpaid intern, and for the last two years, a former employee who lives in Fairfax County no less, donates her time to the office because of the workload, and it's still not enough. I wouldn't be asking for help if we didn't need it. Our doors are always open if you want to come look for yourself. Every office can do a little more with less, but after a while, you're just chronically shorthanded. I think the citizens, business owners, city and school employees value the DMV Select services that we provide. More importantly, we are able to process license plates and enter sold dates in the DMV and the city's records in just one trip. We change addresses and so many other transactions, thus making our personal property billing more efficient, which affects the city's bottom line. I would encourage these folks to share their opinions with you about the situation and see if there isn't something that can be done to keep the DMV Select office open before the end of October. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Clinton. Before he steps down, or before you step down, Mr. Clinton, let me just see if there are any questions for you. Does anyone have any questions directed at Mr. Clinton? Did you -- Ms. Conley?
Thank you for that, Mr. Clinton. I'm just wondering, what would it take for you to keep that office open? Do you need more employees, more space?
Yes, both.
How many more employees?
Two employees, and we would rotate one out of my office into that office because people need to have lunch breaks and go on vacation and stuff like that. And we'd need someplace to, you know, have -- we're basically very, very crowded in my office.
Right.
And there's really no room to even serve the customers that we have. And we're co-located with the Treasurer's Office, so it's kind of a bottleneck both in the office and out in the lobby.
Right. So you need more space. You are thinking the IT space would be good. Is there -- are there other spaces?
I'm open to any possibilities. It just -- it's just very challenging. I really -- I can't understate it, and it doesn't really help morale when you're squeezed in, you're overworked. And then we had an unfortunate situation this year where enough money was removed from people's paychecks due to their VRS contributions. And so people this year had to give up more money to make up for that and give up paid vacation time in some cases. So the morale is really, really low. And that's unfortunate because I don't like going into an office where people look at me and I can tell with their eyes where they're saying, you know, "Why aren't you doing anything to help?" And I've tried, and now, you know, I'm letting you know if you didn't know already what the situation is. And there's, you know, I'm happy to talk offline, happy to meet. I'm at a conference in Fredericksburg right now. I'm going back to it, but I'll be back in the office Wednesday afternoon.
Let me ask you a question if I could. So if you processed with additional help, you processed more, you know, applications, et cetera, would you receive more revenue from the state?
Yeah. What we're not getting to is some of our other core commissioner functions, or we're getting to it later, and we're, you know, we're starting to make mistakes. It's hard to be, you know, do that, wear that many hats, and do everything efficiently. So that's part of, you know, where the revenue would be found to help pay for it, is the things that we're not getting to would be done. Discovery, follow-up, enforcement.
So what do you -- do you have any, like, estimate of how much a person would cost versus how much additional revenue it might bring in?
Yeah, I've broken that down before, you know, in the past, and I could get that information. It's hard to be super exact.
Sure.
But there's certain general areas that we're not getting to that would be enhanced. Like, we recently added online vehicle registration to the city's website, and I think we've had over 350 people register their cars. You know, and that's the other concern, too, is that we had a new building that just opened, a north gate, and we've got two more coming out of the ground. I can -- all I can see in the future is more work on the commissioner's side. So, you know, we -- if we're planning for these buildings and this revenue, we need to make sure we collect what we're entitled to, and that takes work, that takes people.
Sure. Well, to you, I think probably many of us on council would be interested in, I know it sounds like you've already prepared some, maybe several years back, if you'd like to either resubmit what you've done in the past or something new, I think we certainly would consider it. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Shields? It looked like maybe you had anything, something you wanted to say.
Well, I would just note my agreement that the DMV Select has been a great service for people in the city. Mr. Clinton did come to me and speak to, inform me that he was intending to close it, and part of our discussion was about the fact that the funding formula from the state is woefully inadequate in order to pay for the service that's provided. So the city already heavily subsidizes DMV Select, and the council has funded two or one and a half additional positions since DMV Select was created back in, you know, eight years ago or so. And so I do think that that's one of the things that we've been challenged with, is the funding formula from DMV is not geared really to make it, make it easy on localities to provide this service. And it would be really good if we could because DMVs across the state are overcrowded and they are all have long lines. But I would be happy to follow up with Mr. Clinton to discuss it further and report back to council.
Thank you both, appreciate it. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say that in circulating the agenda for tomorrow's Government Operations Committee meeting, I suggested that we begin gathering anew some of the information that has been circulating on this for a while and begin a discussion of whether we can continue this service. The budget implications of continuing it and of eliminating it are things that I think we would want to factor into the next budget cycle, but I feel like we need, yeah, a short-term understanding of what can be done to get us through the next few months until we can look at this in the context of the next budget. That would be my hope that we could approach it that way.
One of the things that I have done is gotten the DMV mobile unit to come to City Hall once a month, and that, of course, would take some workload off our office, and I'm trying to get a second date a month in 2015. So I'm really doing everything that I can to try to help the situation. And, you know, I'm very proud of the service we deliver, and I know from people's, what they say to me, what they write to me, that they really appreciate it. And I'm just asking for a little help, and I would be happy to provide any information. You know, I just want to be in the mix of the debate of what we do with our resources. Not asking for special favors, not asking for carte blanche, but just to be in the mix.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate your fine work. Okay, our next speakers, and again, you can speak now, or you can speak when the item comes up, but our next speaker is Kate, Sam Clemmick. I hope I got your name right. Hi, Sam, how are you? Good. Good. And you're probably Kate.
Yes, yes, I'm Kate Clemmick. We live at 1002 Jennifer Lane, which is the townhouse is right across Grove from West End Park.
Welcome. Thank you for coming out tonight.
I'm going to speak a little bit, then he's going to fill in whatever I forget.
Okay.
We've been here since 2007, and living in a townhouse, the West End is our outdoor living space. We are there pretty much every day, especially since we got a dog last week, last year, we were there more than every once a day. We're talking to support the new renovations that are planned for the West End Park. We really like the design. It maintains the park-like nature of the park, but adds a lot of features that we and other, some of our neighbors have discussed that we really like. In particular, I love the ring trail that's going to go around the park. That's going to be wonderful for people, kids riding their bikes around, walking your dog, everything. That is one of the nicest features. It makes, right now, the park, you've only used the part that has the playground equipment. Anything that, in the middle of the park is a field you walk through. Sometimes you throw a ball, sometimes you don't. The top of the hill, nobody goes up there except people that don't want to do good things. In fact, the little kids, we don't let them go up there because whenever we do a park cleanup, we find things in those woods that are not good. In fact, there's stuff also where the playground equipment, but right now, it's off limits. I don't think my kids have ever been up there. We're really excited that that's all going to open, and it's going to make a cohesive full park for everyone to use. The skate park features, I know there's been some controversy about it. When I first heard about it, I was ecstatic. There's finally an active spot for kids that aren't little to go to. And part of that is my kids are getting older, they're not able to go on the play equipment as much. But also, it's a place for the older kids to go and hang out, even if they're not using it as a skate feature. That keeps them away from where the little kids are. The little kids can go to the park, and there aren't teenagers hanging out, leaving glass bottles, once a found, a bunch of glass broken underneath the equipment. Have someplace else for those kids to hang out. And I really like the new entrance on Broad. I think it really will open up and attract the kids coming home from school. They can come right into the park, hang out, especially since now the middle school's walking to and from the school as well. There's a parade of kids coming through the school, coming right through the neighborhood, and I think it'd be great to have it for them. What I forget.
Well, I used to go to, if you add the skate park, there's a skate park down in Arlington, and normally, I would have to go there, I would have to go there early, like, at 7:30.
In the morning.
In the morning, yeah. And just basically do the skateboard features. And even so, there would be plenty of people that would be there and doing skateboard, scooter, bike, et cetera, on the various equipment. So there, so there are plenty of people that would want to do this, the skate park or the renovations, so.
Excellent. What grade are you in, Sam?
I'm good.
What grade are you in, Sam?
What grade?
Oh, sixth.
Sixth grade, okay. Thanks for coming out and talking with us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, our next and last speaker is Nicholas Zanger. Did I pronounce your name right?
Zanger.
Zanger, I'm sorry. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you all. Hi, my name is Nick Zanger. I live at 316 West Rosemary Lane. And I'm here, I want to talk about the skate features at West End Park. I think it'd be a really good idea to have these features at West End Park because it's a really popular place, lots of activities around there, and a lot of times, kids are skateboarding in the roads and in the streets, and it's just not very safe all the time because you have rush hour and all these other things. And that can lead to injuries and people getting hurt. If we had the skate feature, I know that I would use it, and I know a couple of my friends would use it, too. And there's lots of people in my school that I think it'd be a really good idea to have these features at West End Park, because it's a really popular place, lots of activities around there, and a lot of times, kids are skateboarding in the roads and in the streets, and it's just not very safe all the time, because you have rush hour and all these other things. And it can lead to injuries, and people getting hurt. If we had the skate feature, I know that I would use it, and I know a couple of my friends would use it, too. And there's lots of people in my school that skateboard and longboard and bike and do all that type of stuff, and they would use it, and a lot of people live around that area. It'd be a great idea to have it there. Skateboarding is really popular at my age and younger and older, and it's just, it's a great activity, it can help you kind of relax and get away from, like, school, because that gets all stressful with the SOLs and midterms and all that type of stuff. With the skate feature, it'd just be a great idea, and I would use it, and I could improve my skills, and my friends could, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. What grade are you in?
I'm in eighth grade.
Eighth grade, okay. Thanks for coming out. You think it would help us relax, too, the skate park? Sure, of course, Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Zanger, thank you for coming and speaking to us very well, and to your colleague who spoke earlier. Your concern about injuries is something that I think we all take to heart, and one of the concerns that we have about any activity that involves young people or old folks like us. Is it your experience in skateboarding that most of the kids who are doing it are wearing whatever the state-of-the-art protection is, helmets, knee pads, shoulder pad, elbow pads? Describe for me the typical getup when you go out to go skateboarding now.
Well, you normally are going to wear a helmet to protect your head from concussions and head injuries, and if you're, like, starting out skateboarding or biking, you normally wear these knee pads or elbow pads. So if you fall down, you can stop yourself, and you won't get really injured. I know that, because I just wear a helmet normally when I go out, skateboard around, do that type of stuff, and a lot of other people do, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, we appreciate it. Thanks for all of our speakers tonight. If there are any additional speakers who would like to speak, when an item is called, you're welcome to speak as well. So just put in a speaker slip if you desire to speak at a later point. Madam Clerk, will you summarize the written comments?
I certainly will. We had several comments on the West End Broad project. A resident, whoops, timing myself.
Your time's up.
Whoops. Residents of the 900 block of Park Avenue wrote that they are generally supportive of the West End Broad project, and their concerns are mainly related to traffic and parking and maintaining the residential nature of the street. They forwarded a detailed list of requested modifications to the project. Ron Brusseau of 607 Northwest Street wrote that the city council should not approve the West End Broad project until the developer, developer fully meets the city's affordable housing requirements for ADUs. Lisa Varuxis, 301 Grove Avenue, wrote that she is not averse to developing the West End Broad area, but any development should be mindful of the impact on the existing neighborhoods, on the natural and economic environment, and on the school system. She included a detailed list of her concerns and recommendations for the project. The Falls Church Tree Commission sent a letter to the council outlining the review of the West End Broad project, focusing on protecting the trees and shrubs in city planting beds. And the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce also forwarded a letter to the council encouraging the city council to approve the West End Broad project, because they believe it will benefit the city for decades to come. And we had a couple of questions, suggestions, about the FY 2014 financial year-end report that was presented at the work session. Hal Morgan of 907 Hillwood Avenue just wrote to ask if the tax increase, tax increase projections in the report are cumulative or progressive, and Mr. Shields did answer that they are cumulative. Donald Rea wrote with a suggestion for the section entitled "Where Are We Now and Where Are We Going?" of the report. He said, he suggested that the school operating costs plus their debt service should be shown as a single item, or the total debt, debt service items should be split into schools and others, to clarify that. We had one email regarding, regarding the West End Park Improvement Project. Kathy Kleiman of 203 Grove Avenue wrote to share the views of the West End neighborhood on the park improvement project. They expressed concerns about the plan, including stormwater management, renaming the park, saving an existing mulberry tree, and limiting the size of the park sign on Broad Street. And, and just in other items, Peter and Stephanie Oppenheimer, 610 North Oak, and Jim and Julie Custer of 610 North Oak, wrote with questions and concerns about plans to split a previously combined lot at 604 North Oak Street, and I believe Mr. Shields was also talking with them.
Thank you, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any council requests? Excuse me, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two, following on the letters that we received about the budget and CIP, just want to make sure that Mr. LaConde is aware of those. The Budget and Finance Committee has a meeting scheduled tomorrow night, and some of the points raised in those letters are things that we'll want to go over to make sure we understand. The second thing is related to North Gate, the newly opened development on North Washington Street. As we're discussing the public service costs associated with the newer apartment and condominium buildings, time and again, we get the question, what are the public service costs for a comparable building? And North Gate is reasonably comparable to the proposed Broad and West project. So the request is, could we get from the schools the latest kid count, student count from the North Gate? And also, for transportation demand management purposes, could we get a feeling for how many vehicles are in the building, owned, used, parked by residents of the North Gate? And also, what's the load on the parking for the first-floor retail at the North Gate? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two requests. The first one is to understand where we are with respect to the technical assistance panel that will be put on by the Urban Land Institute, ULI, on October 15th and 16th. We're now less than a month away, and we should be pretty close to firming up both the agenda topics and the attendees, and so we've asked before to have a bit more information, and perhaps you could tell us tonight what that might be.
The, the technical assistance panel will be on October 15th and 16th. The main time for the city council will be at 4:00 on October 16th, and we'll get word out to that once that is really set, but you could put that in there as a save the date time. That would be the time for the presentation of the findings on the 16th. The, and I can get out the fuller agenda to the council once that is finalized as well.
Are these, will these be open to the public? Are they closed sessions, or?
They're not closed session. The, essentially, the way it will work is that the, the tap will have, on the first day, a tour of the site, they'll have some stakeholder meetings, and, and then they will go off by themselves to do work, and it's not behind closed doors, but it's not really a public engagement process, it's really amongst the panel itself to do their work, and then they will come out and make a public presentation again at 4:00 on the 16th.
Do we have the final slate of attendees at this point?
We don't, we don't have the final slate, but it's being firmed up now.
Will there come a time soon that we'll know who they are?
Yeah, as soon as I have the slate, I'll get that information out.
I...
And understand, this is being run by the Urban Land Institute, and so, you know, they're a partner on this, and, and they're, so, but we'll get that information out.
Well, I appreciate that. I know sometimes it's, it's, it's perhaps more efficient just to say that another organization is running this, and it's going to happen in arms' length, but we all know these things sometimes require some deliberation, and it's a little bit like herding kittens, and so the sooner you begin herding those felines, the easier it will be for all of us to understand exactly what the makeup of the panel is. And I presume that we'll have an opportunity to, to speak to that, the makeup as well, in some capacity or another. The second one is for the, what we're calling the bucket deck, which is the run-up of the slides of information and data and circumstances that would allow us to have a useful discussion with regard to where we are in the current budget, as well as a guidance that we would provide the city for in early November, for the coming budget discussions, and I'm just wondering when that, we could see a draft of that.
The, we have presented a draft of that, of the deck to the Budget and Finance Committee. They're meeting again tomorrow night, and so I think we'll have a discussion of that, and then we can get that out to the full council.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Are there any other council requests, Ms. Conley?
Mr. Shields, at the last city council meeting, as we were discussing the Broad and West projects, one of the parts of the conversation was about parking restrictions along Park Avenue, and I'm just wondering if any progress has been made on how the city can address that.
There, there has been, and we will have a report to the council at your next work session on that, which is scheduled for October 8th. And with that, I believe we'll need an ordinance change, or at least a consideration of an ordinance change, and so we'll have that, those options for the council at that time.
Okay, and then along with that, with the parking on Park Avenue, another thing that I have heard come up, but never in any city council meetings, is Spring Street there is one way between St. James Church and St. James School. Has there been any consideration of turning that into a two-way street, or blocking it during school pickup and drop-off like we do in front of TJ, so that that neighborhood can move a little better?
That is not formally under consideration, but I think, I think it should be, and since it's been raised, we'll get a response back to the council as to when that policy was put into effect, as to why it's one-way, and what some of the implications would be to changing that. But certainly, from the perspective of giving drivers options and having your grid work for you, two-way streets are preferable, from that general perspective.
Okay, thank you. And, and then we heard from the clerk, that we heard about the property on South Oak Street, there are neighbors that are concerned, and I know there's some zoning matters under consideration. Is it 604 North Oak Street? And I know, because that's a matter under consideration, that there's not really much to be said about it at the moment, but we have heard from those neighbors, and I'd just like to acknowledge that, I guess.
We have, we've received written correspondence with some questions from neighbors from the project, or the, the proposed application at 604 North Oak. We're considering all of the neighbors' questions, we'll get back with them, and ultimately, it will be a determination that needs to be made by the professional staff who are administering that, that permit.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is about the Hilton Garden Inn, which is always busy, and I'd love to see that every day, there are people there, I think they've been full for the last few weeks. My question is about where the garage, the back of the garage faces Park Avenue. It just seems like a very industrial look right there on Park Avenue, and I know that's one of the concerns that people have about the Mason Row project on Park Avenue, and I'm wondering if there has been any attempt to dress up the back area of the Hilton Garden Inn.
Well, the, the owners of the site are working through a site plan amendment, and we're in discussions with them about the landscaping and the screening in the rear, and so I don't have anything firm to report on that, but it is being discussed right now.
Okay.
For, essentially for better screening through...
Right.
The plantings in the back.
Right, because when you drive down there at night, it's, when it's dark outside, the lights are so bright in that neighborhood. So I'm just wondering if, whatever it was that allowed that parking garage to be so close to the street, if we can make sure that we don't do the same thing with whatever ends up at Mason Row, because it's intrusive on that residential neighborhood there. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd actually like to echo over what Ms. Conley said, and I think as a council, we ought to consider, if we don't have a dark-skies policy, in terms of a policy as a city with respect to lighting and sort of, quote, "light pollution" from these sites, we ought to have something, you know, that should be something we should consider, our staff should consider as well. And I don't know if we have any policies as to, specific policies as to dark-skies lighting, or, you know, standards for lighting in commercial projects that abut residential areas?
We're very familiar with what you're talking about. The city does not have a dark-sky ordinance, per se, like other jurisdictions do. We do have a candle power limit as to light spill-over, and, and there's standards for But in terms of the lighting package that was, that was approved in the site plan, that did undergo that review, and so we can assess whether what is, has been built complies with the site plan, and get back with council on that.
Thank you. Any other council questions or comments? Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Shields, does the city have a policy when we have our street sweeping notices? Do we notify the contractors at construction sites that they need to move their vehicles as well?
I'm not sure whether we do or not, so I'll need to check. I will say that the contractors are responsible for street sweeping right around their site, but when the street, when the city goes through, I don't think we have any direct communication with the contractors at that time. I'm assuming that's a guidance that that's something we should consider.
Mr. Duncan?
Sorry, two other things occurred to me. The activation of the traffic signal at Pennsylvania and Broad is now scheduled for any particular time that's near rather than far?
Last week.
Last week, okay.
Yeah.
It appears that it's in place, right, so?
It's in place. The wiring for the cabinets to have it sync up with our loop, with our system, so that we can regulate the timing sequences, that has gone longer than we expected, so those people who are in there looking into the cabinet, that's what they're doing, and that has taken longer than, than planned.
Well, the good news is, council doesn't meet again until October the 8th, so you'll have, you know, a quiet time to work on that, and the Hilton Garden Inn, I think, also has its grand opening that day, so perhaps we could bundle it all together, we get some plantings on the back and the traffic light on the front, and all will be well in the village. The other question was, the City Hall Task Force was created, and is it, has it met? Is it meeting? What does it do? Ms. Mester, can you update us?
I'm still gathering the attendees that are for the designated categories, and we hope by the end of September, first week of October, to convene that. And speaking of that, there's council representation, so I would also welcome an appointment to that task force for the council members.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's anything else, why don't we go ahead and move on to the Library Board Annual Report? And is that Bradley Gernand? Welcome. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. I'm Bradley Gernand, 1204 Seton Lane. I chair the Library Board of Trustees, and the library director and I come to you once a year to present to you the new annual report, and what we like to do is just pluck out or pull out just a couple of the major details. So I would say, starting at the bottom of page one, I'd like to point out that we had over 1,400 children involved in our summer reading program this year. That's a huge number, given the small space we have, but it actually works fairly well, believe it or not. If cacophony is your thing, that's, it's where you can find it. But we were very pleased by that. And then on page two, under statistical information, I'd like you to note the number of items borrowed. This year, they were 461,000. And if you keep in mind that the surrounding jurisdictions have buildings, whereas we have a single-site library, that's an awful lot of items coming and going from that circulation desk. Some of these are eBooks, but an awful lot of them are print books. So that's a huge number of activity. And then I'd also like to point out that something that I find particularly pleasing is the number of registered borrowers for the city residents, we've now reached 10,700. Isn't the city population now 13,000? 13,500. 13,500. It seems to me this is excellent market penetration, and it's been that way for a number of years, so we're very pleased by that. And to be a, to be reflected here, you had to have used your library card in the past 12 calendar months. So that's a very active figure. And now on page one, you'll notice that we, for the sixth year in a row, have been a nationally-ranked library. The statistics that we were just talking about plow into this, they, and what they represent... about plow into this. They, and what they represent set us aside as one of 263 out of 7,500 libraries. So I would not be surprised that we might perhaps, and hopefully will get a seventh year of this, of this merit, because we continue using all of these same programs. They tend to be even more active than they were the year before, in terms of the people who are attending. So I'm hoping. And then below that, you'll see also a note about the consultants that we had. We think that was a very effective exercise. In fact, Mr. Benton opened it for us by giving the consultants a 10,000-foot view of Falls Church, who we are, what we do, and then he zeroed in, and then we plugged in lots of people after that. So we think it went very well. We got lots of good information from those people. And the information we got will apply no matter what building plan we use, because it told us what, how we should use our space and what we'll be needing. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you and the rest of the Library Board for the good work that you do. You cover a wide range of activities and topics, everything from a major CIP item to a robotic printer, a new 3D printer in the library. So there's quite a realm of information, and I want to thank you particularly for the graphs at the end of the report. I think they give a very good visual representation of the trends, and I, you know, I was very interested to see that our circulation has gone up, even though our collection size has shrunk slightly, which I understand is not uncommon. But thank you, all of you, for serving so well, and for covering such a wide range of activities.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Duncan?
Brad, could, on the printout of the report on page two, the graphic obscures the first two bullet points under one of the headlines. Can you see what I'm talking about? I'm just curious what those two items are.
I don't see what you're talking about.
Oh, well, is it perhaps just my printer that produced that? So, under the box that...
I don't know, funky, I just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it on pa, oh, it's page two of mine, but page one of yours. I'm sorry. You see what I'm talking about, the two boxes, the...
Is it right there?
Yeah, so he needs to, let those say.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, under New Services...
Yes.
We, in essence, are telling you that we just began using a new eBook, or excuse me, e-magazine collection called Zenio, and it has 64 titles, and that's proving very popular. And then below that, we mentioned that we started using an e-audio book collection that's part of the Overdrive system.
Okay, great. I assumed that probably they were, that's what you were talking about, just by way of illustrating the technological updates that you're doing. All the numbers are, of course, up in all your usage categories, and that's great, and helps explain why we are exploring, doing work on the library in the CIP. Would this be an occasion, just for a quick update, about where your consultant stands on the report that you commissioned most recently?
Sure. The planning, the planning commission asked us to kind of go back to the drawing board and, and engage the consultants again, and ask for specific work be done to study the existing building, to see how it can be repurposed for our purposes. And so they're just about to begin that process, and it will be concluded fairly quickly.
So it's, if they begin now, we're trying to fold it in, obviously, to the CIP planning process and this...
That's what we're trying.
...current cycle. Okay. I remain very hopeful we will accomplish that. I see Mary standing up, which is no small feat.
It is no small feat.
So...
I do want to mention that the consultants will actually...
Come on up to the microphones, so the public can hear at home.
You set them down.
Yeah, right, it's...
She's on crutches at the moment, so...
That's why I said it's...
Maybe we can bring the microphone to you.
There we go. Mary McMahon, Library Director. And on October the 6th, the consultants will be here. There will be a special board meeting that day. They will also meet with the staff, and they will present their first kind of conceptual ideas, and get direction from the board, and also from staff, about how to proceed and what to emphasize. In addition to that, we are working with them for the possibility of drawing up conceptual designs for a parking deck nearby, and so we're working on that with them as well. Okay.
Good. October 6th, red letter, date on your calendar. That's Monday, right?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you for that information, and also for getting up. I know that's, good luck with your recovery. Thank you.
Mr. Z?
Well, hopefully, Mary, I don't have to get you back up here again. I think it just shows the dedication of the, the library staff, and the citizens engaged in care and feeding the library that, that instead of skipping, instead of taking an evening of rest, you've actually managed to be here for the council session. So my question's fairly simple. The, given the increasing use of electronic media, I'm just wondering whether it's possible to collect and show in your, in your metrics next time around?
We do collect it, and we can do that.
Yeah, so number of visits, circulation, electronic, and also wondered whether, and collection size. Is it possible also to break down the demographics of the registered borrowers, so we maybe can pick up a trend of, see where the, whether we have children or retirees or whatever, so that we can better fine-tune our service?
I do that. I'm not sure we can, but we certainly will try.
Yeah, I don't want someone to have to go through four filing cabinets of old applications.
We break it down by resident and non-resident, but I'm not sure whether we can separate it out by adult, well, by adult and juvenile. Well, no, I know we can do it by adult and juvenile.
Okay, well, just your best. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you both again. The library is just absolutely first-rate, and I think we all can agree that it's a great asset for the city. So thank you all for your hard work and dedication to making it such a wonderful place.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Uh, Mr... Yes. You gonna do it from down there?
I will. I am.
Okay.
Mayor Tarter, members of council, at the last work session, the council asked if I could provide a briefing for the public on the, the work that the council's been doing over the last several months, to arrive at a framework, to go out to the public on the use of the sale, water sale proceeds, to gather public input on that framework, and then action in October. And, and so I wanted to do that with a few slides for, for the community. First, by way of background, I'm sure, as everyone knows, the sale of the city water system, the Fairfax Water, was approved by the voters last fall, and the agreement was executed in January 2014. And as a result of that sale, we had a boundary adjustment that brought the George Mason High School campus into the city, as well as the property yard into the city. And in addition to that, through, through the transaction, we have $20.5 million in net proceeds after the desement of debt, meaning other obligations in the system, and settling all of our accounts payable and accounts receivable. And so the council's been discussing, at a, at a series of work sessions, the best use of those proceeds, and the council provided formal direction in December of 2013, the thrust of which was that the sale proceeds should be used for the long-term financial benefit of the public and of the city's taxpayers. There's two basic approaches that we've been discussing. One is direct investment in city projects. We have a very large capital improvements program of well over $100 million of identified capital needs in the city. And direct investment in city projects allows us to avoid debt, allows the taxpayer to have the benefit of avoided debt service, and it has a 20-year benefit. That's our typical bonding timeframe for municipal debt in the city. And, and so that's really sort of the, for any dollar of the sale proceeds that's invested in city projects, it provides that 20-year benefit for the taxpayer. A longer-term benefit for the taxpayers is to invest the sale proceeds in order to return on investment on principal. Through the bonds that municipalities typically can invest in, under Virginia law, the yield on those bonds is very low, 0.5% for short-term securities, 3.5% for long-term government bonds. The pension fund is an alternative that has been under discussion for well over a year now, that allows the city to achieve a longer-term and higher yield on its investment of principal. And that return is realized to the benefit of the taxpayer through a reduction in the annual required contribution, and it's a perpetual benefit. It's, it's a benefit that would stretch on longer than 20 years. And I'll talk about that approach in a little bit more detail in just a slide. But just to take a graphical look at how a hypothetical $1 million investment can be used for the benefit of the taxpayer, there's three, three models here. The blue line represents the return on investment for the taxpayer for direct investment in capital. And that's if you take debt that is programmed in the CIP, and instead use the sale proceeds for the 20-year term of that bond, the taxpayer would see a savings of about $85,000 per year for every million dollars of debt avoided. The return on investment of principal invested in the pension fund is slightly lower, about $10,000 lower for the million dollars. But again, at year 20, that benefit continues to benefit the taxpayer, whereas the direct investment then falls down. If it's invested in traditional bonds or securities that the city could invest in, if you put it into endowment fund and invest it in long-term securities, this is, and under current market conditions, the, the maximum yield that you could get for that hypothetical million-dollar investment. Part of the, the proposal that I will go through in just a moment would fully fund the city pension, and thereby reduce the city's annual contribution to the pension fund. And why would you do that? One, it meets a legal obligation of the city, and so the city, just like the issuance of a bond, the pension fund represents a liability that the city is, is required to meet under Virginia law. It reduces city operating costs currently to fund our pensions for the city. The school employees that are enrolled in the city basic plan, this does not include VRS, where, where teachers are, and police, is a $3.6 million per year budget item, and we will reduce that by fully funding the pension plan. It would improve the city's credit rating, which would lower our, our lending costs over time. And again, as noted before, it's a perpetual benefit. If you take the average annual turn over the long term, it's been 7.5%, and we predict that for the future, for the modeling purposes, and we believe that that, over the long term, is, is the right assumption. So there are three allocations that we've discussed. What I've proposed to the council is an allocation to fully fund the pensions, so the blue slice of the pie would be put in the pension fund, and the remainder would be invested in, in direct investments in capital. This figure of $11 million represents the 2013 unfunded liability, and our actuaries at Chiron are, right now, updating this year's funded status, and that will be provided in November. That's when that's due, with the full analysis. I do think that this number is going to be seen as a ceiling in terms of the unfunded liability, and is likely to go down, because we had good returns in the market this year, and those are reducing our unfunded liabilities. Another option would be to invest all of the sale proceeds directly into the capital improvements that are called for in the CIP, and so that's 20.5 million. And a third approach would be to invest slightly less in the pension fund, essentially one-third of the proceeds in the pension fund, and then two-thirds for major capital projects, infrastructure investment. And we would determine those allocations through the development of the capital improvements program over the coming months. So those are three options that have been discussed, and which the council would like to have out to the, to the public for input and communication. We'll have discussion tonight whether you'd like these to be modified in our future presentations, but those are the ones we've been discussing up to this point. So if you put that in, in the context of the full $20.5 million invested, in terms of the impact for the taxpayer of the, of the three approaches, if you take the all-capital approach, you have the slightly better impact for the taxpayer in the 20-year horizon for, for your typical bond, but then after 20 years, that benefit is basically done, and, and you'll still have that infrastructure working for the city, but there'd be no budgetary impact, or no direct fiscal impact for the taxpayer after that point. If you take the one-third, one-third, one-third option, which is the last one that I presented, that's this green line, so you, the, the real difference there is that you do have that perpetual benefit generated from the $7 million invested in the pension fund. The blue line is, is the manager's proposal, and again, you have the higher perpetual benefit, because you have a larger amount, $11 million, invested in the higher yielding and perpetual benefit of, of the pension fund. If you marry that to the capital improvements program as adopted by the city council, but excluding the high school project, this is the baseline of the debt service projections for that capital improvements program. Currently, we are paying about $5 million per year in debt service, and that would increase by $1.8 million, I'm sorry, $2.8 million in the year 2020, up to the peak there, with the new debt service being shown in red, or existing debt service tailing off in blue. That's $37.7 million in capital projects that are, that are slated for bonding over the next five years. Now, if you take the approach, the, each of the approaches, the, the three approaches have a fairly similar impact on your debt service projections in the out use. This takes the manager's proposal, which has the return on investment of principal and, from the pension fund going directly to reducing debt service. So in other words, that benefit is going, translating directly into reducing the cost of capital for, for a capital project. But we shaved the peak of our debt service down by about $1.6 million at the peak in 2020. Now, still, with the full deployment of the, of the sale proceeds to lower the cost of our, of our capital program, we still have a $1.2 million increase in debt service by the year 2020, which is an indication of the, of the amount of capital need that's out there, that's, that's funded or, or planned for in our capital improvements program. But this assumes the reduction in our annual required contribution for the pension fund, and those savings going directly to shave off debt service, and then the remainder invested directly in the capital projects and the CIP. A couple of additional points. We do recognize that we are in a low-interest envi, a low-interest rate environment today. We are enjoying historic lows for interest rates. So it is, in terms of, of planning ahead, and particularly planning for the high school project, which was not modeled in the prior slides, there is value in holding sale proceeds in a future capital endowment fund today, in order to smooth out that debt service curve... in a future capital endowment fund today in order to smooth out that debt service curve for the high school as well, which we also anticipate, and most experts anticipate, will be in a higher interest rate environment than we're in today. So I do make that note, and we'll do more modeling on that option as well. This is just an initial presentation for the public. We are planning a town hall meeting on Saturday, October 11th, here in council chambers, to give a presentation for the public, answer questions about that. The council's first reading on this is scheduled in the form of a budget amendment, which would be on October 14th. And then second reading would be on October 27th. That's the schedule going ahead. And again, the form of this decision would be in an amendment by ordinance to the FY15 budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments from council.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Shields, have we calculated the net present value of the three options?
The, we have not done that explicitly. And so we are counting it in all these, we're trying to translate that into a net present value in terms of reduced debt service and savings for the taxpayer. That's the form that we're doing it. But if, particularly if we're talking about trying to avoid debt service for a later project, i.e. the high school, we would need to, we'd need to run that calculation.
Thank you. Other questions? And keep in mind that tonight is not the night for a full discussion of the substance of this matter, but really just put some questions on the table, seek further input, guidance for Mr. Shields. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. As we move into that public engagement process you're talking about, I would ask that we keep one question in mind, which is what I hear a lot. We sold the water system, what did we get for it? As we, you know, present the options for how we might use the water sale proceeds, I would like, and I've discussed this with you a little bit, to see a kind of modified manager's plan, which attempts to connect the use of the pension investment vehicle to a very specific cost that everyone sees and understands and is directly in front of them. The most shovel-ready project of all the CIP needs, the large CIP needs, is Mount Daniel. We know the cost of that bond. We know the annual debt service cost at 20 years, and we can calculate it at 30 years. And I would very much like to see the approach that you've used applied to figuring out if we can meet the annual debt service costs on the Mount Daniel bond with use of the water sale proceeds portion that is going into the pension investment fund. And I know you understand what I'm saying, and I'm not sure I've said it completely clearly for everyone else, but my objective is trying to answer that question that you hear. I remember when we were discussing the water sale, the water sale itself, people said, you know, we should just find a way to invest this money that we're spending on this water system. It's just too much hassle. We could get a better return if we just sold the thing. And in the end, that's basically what we did. And now we're trying to find the best way to get a high rate of return. The pension option, I think, offers that for 11 of the 20 and 1/2 million now that you indicated. And I would like to know if we can correlate the two in the way that I described, so that we can explain to folks. This is one way that we could deploy the water sale proceeds and basically buy, use a perpetual asset to buy a long-term capital need. Then the other quick thought is just the audit of the water fees. That process was percolating along through the summer, and before we resolve how we're going to use the water sale proceeds, I'd hope that we might be able to resolve any outstanding questions about the billing that some folks had raised, whether the billing towards the end of our tenure was accurate.
Any response, Mr. Shields?
Well, we do believe that the billing was accurate. We have hired an outside firm just to look through the data, and that firm is RMA and Associates. And they are looking at the data right now and working with, we need to use Fairfax Water staff, have, to borrow them in order to help the consultants use the data and access it. But that's underway, and I don't know, Mr. LaConde, if we have a, any other firm date for an update on that?
It really isn't at this time. What we've done is we've given the consultant the data, and they are going through it now. As soon as they're done, we will meet again and decide what steps we'll take going forward.
That's, I think, my understanding of how the process is working. I just would reiterate that it would be good, I think, to link up a resolution of that issue, which has been represented as minor, but nonetheless, it would be desirable, I think, to link up a resolution of that with the vote that we're going to be asked to cask about how to deploy the water sale proceeds by the end of October, if that's six weeks from now or so, if that's reasonable.
That's what we're working toward.
Any other, Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. The council's been debating this issue for quite a while. Debate actually probably preceded the 2015 budget development, so we're probably a year into discussion of what we should do with the money. Of course, we didn't know what the money was until fairly recently. For the citizen and those of us in the city that have a broad interest in trying to help us, and we do ask for your help in trying to figure out whether, in fact, we put it into a pension fund, and it's really not that simple, or do we buy infrastructure? And again, that's not all that simple either. I had to go all the way back to a former council member, David Chavern, who, in the last decade, so it would be probably the early 2000s, said, "If this city doesn't do something with the changes in the government accounting standard, it will have a big price to pay with respect to its attitude toward funding or not funding the retirement account." And I just note, all of you can do the research as well, that Virginia is, throughout the state, funded at 69 and 1/2 percent. This city is, in fact, one of the cities that has the highest funding profiles, and not that long ago, four or five years ago, it was actually funded at nearly 110 percent of the requirement. So that just means that we are a city that takes care of its people. I do have a question as I dig deep into this stuff. The Governmental Accounting Standard Board Statement, GASB 68 and 67. 68 says that unfunded liabilities need to be discounted at 20-year AA rate, which is 7 and 1/2 percent, coupled with 67, which says that you need to put any unfunded liability into your balance sheet every year. So if you put them together, and say hypothetically you're fully funded, then 67, 68 work for you. But if you're not at full funding, then it works against you. And of course, you summarized that earlier when you said that it would have a big effect on our bond rating. When do we have to implement those statements?
67 is this year, 68 is next year.
So this time is short for us to decide what to do with the money. Now, if you recognize this chart, something from late summer. This blue represents what's loosely called the pension fund investment, and this green represents the infrastructure component. So, you have to forgive me, I'm an architect, so I just used paper and scaled it up. May not be completely accurate, but let's say it's close enough to the nearest million or so. So if you add them all up, the blue comes up to here in terms of return on investment at year 22, and the green comes up to here. So really, we're talking about a very small delta with regard to where we put the investment. So it comes down to whether we think that the market will sustain itself. And that's really a really good question, isn't it? No one really knows. And it sounds like I'm trying, I'm trying to talk myself into fully funding the pension fund. You could be right. But let me just say, and journalists wrote this better than I could, even in the best of times, pension accounting is fertile ground for voodoo economics and political expediency because those projections are based on a series of all but unknowable assumptions. It's hard to predict with precision, for example, just how many years of service a current employee will accumulate, or how many checks they'll collect in a lifetime, or whether they'll take advantage of the common practice known as spiking as they near There are currently seven states, thus says I, more than 90 percent of their estimated future pension payments. So for the public, I ask that when you speak to one another and to the council, that you are mindful of where we should be investing, your funds, not ours, your funds, and also be mindful of fiscal discipline. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Z. Unless there are any other comments, why don't we go on and move to the next item? Madam Clerk, will you read the first item on Business on the Agenda, please? Thank you, Ms. Messner and Mr. Shields for the presentation.
We have TR 1436, Resolution to Adopt FY 2015 Funding Recommendations for the Arts and Cultural Grants and Virginia Commission for the Arts, VCA Local Challenge Grant Submission.
Thank you. Ms. Messner?
Good evening, councilors. It's my honor to be presenting on behalf of the Rexon Park staff and the Little City Catch Foundation, the recommendations for the next round of funding for grants. This would be implementing the third year of funding that council has already approved for the FY 15 budget. The staff report includes all the guidelines, since it's a relatively new process for council and the public to be aware that this is a competitive process. There is an independent grant review committee that's not involved in any of the grant submissions that reviews and ranks them, and you can see in Attachment A, the rankings. And then that recommendation is forwarded to the foundation, who votes and then makes the recommendation to council for the actual allocating of the money. Council has approved $20,000 in the FY 15 budget for this grant, and we are proposing that we would leverage that money to match the 5,000 maximum grant that we can get for the state for these grant programs, and then that would give a $25,000 allocation. There were eight grants submitted this year. The value of the requests was 36,000, a little over. And so you'll see on Attachment A, the names of the grants, the rankings, and the recommendations for what would be awarded. There are, in the middle of the page, the four grants that the total amount would be a combination of local funding and then the Virginia Commission of Arts state grant. The Attachment B gives you a good synopsis of each of the grant submissions. They're quite varied, and they really do bring forward the arts, cultural, and history. I will note that for the VCA grant, history is not an eligible activity, and so that's the reason it's not proposed for a match. And then the first two, Watch Night and Tinner Hill, happened obviously on New Year's Eve and in January, and the grant isn't awarded till April, and so the timing would be off, and they'd have half of their funding. And then Attachment C is just to give council an update as to the outcome of last year's grant awards, so you can see the good works that are occurring as we leverage this money with our nonprofit arts and cultural communities and organizations. And so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but staff does recommend approval of the grant awards as presented in Attachment A.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions from council? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Messner, on the, first of all, just reading through this, you get a deep appreciation for how much mileage we get out of a very modest amount of money, which is impressive, and leads me to, you know, want to try to make the case that we should, you know, fund some of these groups at a higher level if we had the money, either through, you know, public resources or some sort of public-private partnership when we have developers come in and we have proper arrangements. It would be nice, I think, to have some metrics that we could present that would help us gauge how much we're accomplishing related to the language on line 152, where it notes arts and cultural grants investments generally are returned directly in local tax revenue generation by many of the nonprofits, as well as spin-off funding from meals and sales tax. That is, that is the line that it would be nice to have actual hard data on. And the only data that I know is typically when you go to Creative Cauldron and there's a performance, Laur Hall will ask those who are there to raise their hands if they came from, you know, Maryland or the district or further outside the region, and it's, it's very impressive, the reach that that one organization has, bringing people in from all around the region and even outside the region to attend events here. If other groups could manage to produce some sort of data along those lines, I think it would help make the case for us to increase funding in areas where it's clear that we are doing what is mentioned there in line 152 and 153. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, let's open the matter to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any council comments? We heard a question. Any comments? No? Do we have a motion then?
I make a motion to adopt TR 14-36.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Sorry. Ms. Oliver on the second? Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll call vote?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item is the authorization to award a contract. Is that right?
That's correct.
Would you go ahead and read that item, please?
Yes. authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to MK Development and Investment LLC in an amount up to $528,000 for the West End Park Improvement Project.
Thank you. And who's going to do the staff report for this item?
Mayor Tarter, Mr. Schlitt is going to provide a staff report for this item, and we do have members of the Recreation Parks Advisory Board here as well to answer any questions. And I will just say that getting to this point tonight to have a contract for the council, we're very happy that we're on the verge of action on this. We do recognize that there have been questions posed and will, that the council received over this weekend, and we will provide responses to those. But we have had, I think, over 10 public hearings on this over the, over the past several years. This is a project that was delayed because of the recession, when we pulled money out of the capital improvements program. And, but at this point, we have received bids for the project and for implementation. And Mr. Schlitt will present an overview of the project and also responses to recent questions that have been asked about it.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome to you all. We appreciate you, all the hard work you've done to get us to this point. I want to go turn the lights down, but go ahead on, Mr. Schlitt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss what is a very exciting project as we enter into the final stages before into the final stages before the actual construction. West End Park, as you know, is a project that combines the current park with a piece of land that the city acquired back in 2005. It ties those two pieces together using public input in the West End Park master plans as guidelines, all the while keeping the city vision in mind throughout the process. First and foremost, I'd like to say that everyone involved in the planning process regarding this park have always been in favor of naming the park after Mr. Harry English. Mr. English has without a doubt been the biggest fan and a driving force behind the success of the original West End Park, and is the intention of staff to make sure that the new West End Park be named after Mr. English. It should also be noted that Mr. English's wife, Madeline, who was actually here earlier, and I guess we exceeded her bedtime and she had to go, but Mr. English is very ill, but she was here, and she has also given her support to the project. At this point, you've seen the plans, we've discussed many of the issues, and I do want to take a few minutes to update you on a few of the previously asked questions. Water runoff in the park, and there's been a lot of talk about the stormwater issues in this park and obviously all around the city. But during our most recent meeting with the public on September 3, an issue regarding, it's a several hundred-foot-long water runoff swale that directly along the West End boundary and behind the homes on Grove Avenue. And the swale is in need of some attention, repairs, in order to allow it to properly flow into the stormwater drains. I have worked with the city's Public Works Department to determine how to address the issue, and have been assured by the Public Works Director and the Superintendent of Operations that the needed work that will be needed to get it back to where it should be now can be completed by the end of October, and that all future maintenance will also be able to be handled through the current stormwater fund, so it doesn't have to take from this particular project. But it's something that can be done and can be handled through that fund. Also important to note that included in the project is a fairly large rain garden bioretention area, and that was originally put in through the engineers, and it will handle all the water issues that may arise in the park as currently set. The next issue I'll talk about is the famous mulberry tree. And this mulberry tree, to some, is a nuisance tree or whatever, and it's been clear to others that it is not, and that it is something that would like to be saved. And with that said, we haven't got the renderings, and we haven't been able to negotiate with the contractor yet until this contract would be approved or authorize the city manager to approve the contract. But I think it'll be simple enough, and I'd like to say that we'll go ahead and save that mulberry tree at this point. We can move the pathway a few feet one way or the other and make that happen. I think that mulberry tree can be saved at this time, and we should, and we will put that into our plans for the future. In regard to the skate features, the skate features were of particular interest during that same September 3 meeting. It was determined that while skateboarding might be in a bit of decline at the high school age groups, it is still very high on the middle school-aged residents, as you heard a little bit from today. And Dr. Rory Dippold's survey was also mentioned earlier, but about 44% of all the middle schoolers that were surveyed said that they'd certainly enjoy partaking in some recreational uses of this. I've also had some interesting comments from some of the public, just in general, that these pieces that are, kind of looks like little pieces of art or something, that the kids can go and play on them. It doesn't say, you know, this has to be only skateboarding at all times. The other thing I would note is that skateboarding still, even in maybe a little bit of a decline, and I think a lot of sports go through this, but skateboarding still can, is listed as high as the third highest in participatory sports nationally, behind only football and basketball. So it's still a very popular sport. And then the last issue, I think, or one of the questions that's been raised recently that I'd like to speak briefly about, is the new signage at the new entrance on Broad Street. It was decided during the design phase that a new entrance to the park was needed, and that the perfect place for this would be right on Broad Street. The intention, and again in rhythm with the city council vision, was to add a park sign like no other that welcomes passerby to the wonderful asset that will be available to them once the park is opened up and all amenities are in place. The city does not have another park on the west side of town, and none that have the ability to potentially encourage people to stop and see what the city has to offer right off of one of its busiest streets. The authorization by this council to allow the city manager to award the contract to MK Development will allow for this much-needed project to begin, and for the council vision and the vision of our citizens in regard to West End to become a reality. As Wyatt mentioned earlier, there are two members currently present from our advisory board, and in fact, our past chair, current member Charlie O'Hara, and current member Steve Selby, and any of the three of us could answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. I imagine we have some questions. Do we have any? We do indeed. Ms. Conley?
Mr. Schlitt, can you just point out where is the mulberry tree on that map? That is the mulberry tree. And where is that in relation to the current playground?
Current playground is right down here.
Okay.
And so the new path kind of takes where the current playground is, they meet in right here, and this is where the new path kind of begins to develop, and it does come right across. And really, the main reason why the mulberry tree was originally intended to come down, as I mentioned, I think some looked at it as a bit of a nuisance tree or whatever, but it also does bear fruit, and some of that fruit, they assumed, and I'm sure it still will, will stain some of the new path or whatever, but if it provides sanctuary for birds and different things, then we'll deal with that. So that was the intended, the reason for why it was originally going to be moved. And the path itself really would need to either be moved a few feet further this way to kind of get it out of the tree line, the canopy, and/or maybe all the way in here in order to fit within the park boundaries, but we'll work that out.
And I just have one more question about the park entrance. And that applies to Parks and Rec, but to other signage around the city. Because we have a lot of signage, and we've all heard me say I'd like it to say, "Welcome to Falls Church," but also the continuity of signage, it seems like we have new banners down on Maple Avenue, and we have our traditional Falls Church signs, and then you're talking about a new arch. And just citywide, I'd like to see continuity, so that all those things look the same, so people know, not only from the trees, but also from the signage, that they're in the city of Falls Church. So I saw the drawing that Parks and Rec has for that, which doesn't necessarily match any of the other signs. And I'm just wondering, is there a way to hold off on that, that particular design, until we have a master sign look?
And you know, Charlie may be the best one to answer this, he's been involved in this a lot longer. One of the thought processes, if I remember correctly, that came about was that we do have a lot of parks, and they all serve, in a way, different purposes and different things. And so one of the concepts, or one of the things that came about, was that we should announce them according to really what they are and what they mean. So maybe the continuity piece is what we've always had, but as we do develop these new parks, and as we get into Howery Herman, there's been some, you know, already in some of the original engineering, you know, a little bit different feel. So I think we want to announce what these parks are and what they mean in a little bit of a different way, and not necessarily have every park have the exact same thing.
I think Charlie O'Hara, 2717, Welcome Drive. I think that's what the thought of as we went into this process. I believe, and I'm going back to my memory because we're talking 2008, 2009, that this signage, when it was developed, was to incorporate some of the design elements of the bridge over, the W O N D bridge over there. So that's why this design with the curved architecture came in, because of the bridge that's right next to it. So the thought would be of the board at the time is, you know, right now, for the last 20 years, we've had designs, signs that were developed by the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, who came up with our signs, the wood signs with the scroll naming in them. So the thought was, as we move forward with some of these mass, park master plan improvements, we would give some individuality to the parks. This is the first one we've had to come up. Howery Herman will be the next. But the anticipation would be if you have Frady Park, you have a Victorian-type sign, because that's what's in there right now with regards to the gazebo and things along that. You know, is any of that set in stone right now? No, but that was what our thought was when we were moving forward with the design of this project.
But just beyond park signs, it would also be nice if the, because the EDA is talking about doing signs, and Catch is doing signs, and we have charros and bicycle wayfinding signs, and it just seems sometimes like it's a mishmash of signs, and all these different groups should be talking to each other somehow so that the signs reflect something similar.
There are a lot of signs. Yeah.
Mr. Shields, is it possible to refer that question about signs to the Architectural Advisory Board or some other board or commission that has some expertise in the area?
This particular site plan went through the architectural, I don't know if, are you talking about all the signs?
No, I'm just, this is aside from this current topic, but just the general, is that something that could address the question that's been raised?
Well, if the question is a uniformed sign package for everything, I'm not sure. I think we need to maybe take this conversation offline and think about where we would go with it. One thing that is for sure here is we've got a standard sign package for parks, and this is a departure from it, and there's a reason for that, because of its location for the reasons noted. Sorry, I'm not.
I like this sign, I like that sign very much. I think it's a great design, it reflects the station, and it reflects the bridge, and so I think that's a really good sign. I just like that visual continuity throughout the city, so people would know that they're all in the city.
Yeah, and I do think the intention amongst, as we started putting this project together and started working with some engineers, was that we would eventually get to a point where some of the traditional parks may have the traditional signs, but the big parks that have, you know, a grand entrance or whatever, that we're going to do something that kind of brings that out. And that was the original intent, was that we'll have different parks with different, you know, different themes behind them.
Can I just ask a question? The master plan for this park dates from when?
2007, I believe this one was done.
All right. Mr. Shields, do we have a sense if we're implementing a master plan that's more than five years old, that we should revisit it or update it, or do we think the life of a master plan is 10 or 20 years? I only ask because the question arose about whether there had been a change in the need for a skate park and...
The Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board was alive to that issue and held a public meeting in September just to reengage with the neighborhood on this project. But we do recognize that a lot of the heavy lifting on the design was done, you know, that long ago. But in terms of, I think, what our view is, that this project remains, that the designs remain effective and meet the needs that we're trying to target in terms of the priorities for active uses in our parks, as well as the passive uses, and this park will be able to do both.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was all prepared to read my beyond disappointed, now dismayed speech, but it's obvious that there's no need for that. So the major issues with respect to renaming the park, Harry English Park, thank you, it's great. For addressing the stormwater issues and bioretention for the people that live in that neighborhood, great solution, thank you for that. For protection of the so-called mulberry tree now deemed to be a community treasure, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, my email does as well. You know, the skateboard facility, you know, it's a great look, piece of sculpture, I really think it's, you know, you could have picnics on it, play chess on it. I'm looking forward to seeing it built, and, you know, Ms. Hockenberry, if you'll kindly refrain from sending in more kids down the street on skateboards, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And when it comes time to move this, I'm happy to do that, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Danny, the access to the park from the west side, Falls Avenue, you know, we've talked a lot about these community parks that have become, what is it, it's the other way around, neighborhood parks that have become community parks, and this one will not have parking, even though it will be a widely-used community park. So we want to facilitate access to it from north, south, east, and west. What's the current arrangement on the west side? I mean, is it just sort of an informal, everybody knows you can cut through the extra lot, but that's not really codified? Is there anything we can do to formalize that?
We've certainly, that's certainly on the Open Space Committee's agenda, which is the same group that sits behind you and serves in that capacity. We've had, in fact, the Assistant City Manager was involved in the direct conversations with the owners. We haven't gotten there, so we still have, and, you know, it's just understood that people walk through. That is obviously still on the goal. Every year, when you get the report from the Recreation and Parks Department in regard to open space, it's still on our list. It's not on the top, but it certainly is up at the top, or it's not number one, but it's still at the top. That's a piece of land, we need an entrance from Falls Avenue, and I think you already knew that, and, but nothing, we've gotten nowhere with that in the past year.
Okay. We don't need to solve it now, obviously, but if it's a funding question, that's one thing. If it's a, you know, issue with the neighbor, that's something else. It's just that as we do, you know, more development generally in the city and possibly particularly at the Broad and West Street intersection, it would be nice to know that we are pulling every lever that we can to make this park accessible from every direction that we can imagine, because it is going to be a popular spot. So let's just keep that on the front burner, I'm sure you all will, but let's do try to keep our focus on that as we hear more about the Broad and West project through the fall. The second-to-last question, how to put this? I remember Mr. English very well when I first came to the city and walked up and down Grove Avenue to the metro. It was 1986, '07. That's a long time ago now, and Mr. English is getting on in years. What's the realistic timeframe for ceremony naming this, the Harry English Park?
In a, okay? The naming will be proposed at our next meeting, our September meeting was a public hearing. It will be proposed at our next meeting, so you will have it on your desk, or the city manager's desk, you know, the day after our next meeting, which is the first Wednesday in October. So the question would be then, how quickly can you respond?
Thank you. I would, sure, speak for everyone, and urging that we act with all non-deliberate speed, that we actually act with all speed on that when that recommendation comes to us. Thank you.
I've got a couple questions, if I could. I would first off like to echo Mr. Duncan's comment, which I've made at earlier meetings, I'm really trying to open this park up from the other side. I should probably know as well, plenty of kids cut through here on their way to MEH or George Mason, and I think it's a much nicer walk, and also by bike as well than going along Route 7, which has traffic and cut through and all sorts of issues. So I think it's even more important than just allowing access to the other side, but it is a route, and I think a better route for kids to get to school than along a major thoroughfare. So I would definitely encourage you, if you need our assistance in some way, to push that along, but I think it is very important for a lot of reasons. A couple questions, is there any lighting in this park? I think this has been discussed a while back, but I can't remember. Any lighting proposed?
There is no proposed lighting in the park.
Okay. And the walkways, what is those proposed materials? Are those gravel, mulch?
Yeah, there's three different things. Around the skate features, it's a concrete, because the skateboards go across much smoother. In order to transition out of the skate feature area, it will become stone dust path, and that's a little less, the skateboards have a little less capability going down, so it was purposeful to kind of tell the skateboarders this is where that ends. And in other areas, it's an asphalt pathway. So there's three different processes within that trail that goes around, concrete, asphalt, and stone dust path.
Okay. Are you adding any additional bike racks?
There is, there are bike racks included in the site plan, yes.
Okay, so there'll be more bike racks than are there currently? And there's a And there's a water fountain there right now. I guess that'll stay. Any improvements for things like that?
There is a water fountain out there closer to the W and O D, and it will stay. And at this point, there's no intention to change the one that's there out, but that may be required at some point.
Okay. I'm trying to think if there are anything else I have. I know Mr. Z has worked a lot with the neighborhood, so I think my hat's off to you, or thank you for the good work you've done. We all got an email from Kathy Kleiman, who I think you all have worked with, and so I might thank you to her and to you all for working to try to work out issues that were outstanding. And for all of you, for all the good work you've done over these many years, we're all looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. So, thank you all. If I can, I'd like to open this matter to the public. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter, now would be the time. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. We've made council comments really already. Are there any additional council comments? Are we ready for a motion? Are we ready for a motion then? Mr. Z.
I am, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to MK Development and Investment, LLC, an amount up to $528,000 for the West Harry English West End Park Improvement Project.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, for Mr. English.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next item, please?
Next item is authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to Stevens Construction Corporation in an amount up to $626,000 for the Great Falls-Little Falls Storm Water Project.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Mayor Tarter, members of council. This was the top-ranked priority in the watershed management plan as a project to reduce flooding impacts in the Great Falls-Little Falls area. We'll do this by detaining storm water from the City Hall campus. It's about three acres of impervious surfaces, and the water is designed to be stored and detained below the tennis courts. So, when this project is under construction, the tennis courts behind the community center will be taken out of commission for approximately three months while the project is underway. When it's completed, we'll be able to store 132,000 gallons of storm water in these underground detention facilities, and that will collect runoff again from the majority of City Hall, the rear parking lot, the community center. And it will cut the 10-year storm event flows downstream from the site by over half, from 21 cubic feet per second to eight cubic feet per second. It will also allow the city to meet its first five-year milestone under the Chesapeake Bay total maximum daily load credit requirements, state mandates that we're under. The project was put out to bid over the summer. We received numerous bids in response to that solicitation, and the recommended bid award is for the low-complying bid, which was in the amount of $544,748. We do also ask council for a 15% contingency in the contract authorization for things like unsuitable soils or other things that we may encounter in the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any council questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. On line 31, as you note, 32, actually, the project's cost was significantly reduced by being able to limit the work onto the tennis court area. I just want to commend whoever the bright bulbs were who figured out how to reduce the cost of this project. That's great work and good value for our money, which also reminds me to say that I think it's helpful for the community to be aware about the vote we took before this one and this vote as further evidence of our, the breadth of our commitment to capital improvements projects, to storm water, to parks. You know, the marquee buildings get a lot of attention, schools, City Hall, library, but we're really at work in a lot of different areas, bringing quality of life to all of our citizens, wherever they are, on the spectrum and whatever services they use. Thank you.
Is that a question?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Conley, do you have a question?
Mr. Shields, will there be a sign out there that says your storm water dollars at work? Oh, is it out there?
It's already there.
Okay.
It's already there. It's actually been up there for a couple of months, and so the good news is people will see action coming up very soon on this project.
Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Shields, when, what's the timeframe in which people will actually see work being done?
The, we will get underway in the month of October, and the project will be largely complete in December. We do think it will be potentially, we're going to manage that, but there will be some disruptions on the City Hall campus, obviously, when this is happening, and it will impact parking. And so, we will try to get word out in advance of those impacts and plan for it, particularly on Court Day, which is our biggest parking day.
Okay. Unless there are any other questions, want to open this matter to the public? Are there any members of the public that wish to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any council comments? We've already heard maybe a comment or two. I am going to make a quick comment. I live on Little Falls Street, and although this matter was approved by prior council and there are more, three or more people who live on Little Falls who'll be affected by this, I'm going to abstain from this vote nonetheless. So, are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll call vote on this?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have a motion yet. Can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to Stevens Construction Corporation in an amount up to $626,000 for the Great Falls-Little Falls Storm Water Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Z, on the second.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mayor Tarter is abstaining. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
And Mr. Z?
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero. With one extension.
That's right. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's move on to the next item. And that would be business not on the agenda. I think we have a speaker on business not on the agenda. Mr. Hare, thank you for coming back.
Charlie O'Hara, 2717 Welcome Drive. As we walked out the door, I came up with one or two solutions, as was opposed about Harry English. One could be, council yourself could move to name it as Harry English and therefore refer it immediately to boards and commissions, thereby bypassing the additional two weeks. Second, if that doesn't, isn't to your liking, then I, as a citizen, will move that the council recommend the naming of the West End, currently known as West End Park, as a Harry English park. You all can pass, take that resolution as it's from a private citizen. Also, refer it to boards and commissions. That way, you're saving the two weeks necessary from the boards. Either way, you're getting what accomplished and you're short-circuiting the timeframe. That, I believe, is government at work.
Thank you very much for those suggestions. We appreciate it. I don't know if anyone has any comments or thoughts on that?
I appreciate that suggestion. I want to jump and say yes. I suppose we should, you know, well, we should publicly notice and everybody should be...
You have to refer it to boards and commissions anyway as part of this, the resolution that was passed, so it'll have to come back to you, but it has to go out to boards and resolutions. You know, if it's coming from the council now, you know, you have the city attorney. I don't know if it's necessary, but it, again, short and circuits the timeframe you seemed to be concerned about earlier.
I guess my inclination probably would be to allow the public to participate in this process, maybe more than us taking a, taking action tonight, but I'm certainly leave that open to others for their own comments and thoughts. Any thoughts, contrary thoughts?
We'll be back.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming back. All right, so let's go ahead. Is there any other business not on the agenda? Any council member comments we haven't heard previously? Mr. Z?
Thank you. I want to draw your attention to this fine piece of art. It's a Chinese fan and has trees on here, and it was presented to the city on Friday. And I could say more about this, but the actual person who knows everything about this is Wendy Cindy Mester. I'm hoping she'll talk a little bit about her interaction with the Georgetown University Global Executive Institute.
Thank you, Mr. Z, for that opportunity and also his initiation that got the opportunity for the city to welcome 29 members of the Guangdong Province of China to learn about local government, its relationship to state and federal government. And so, we had fun learning about the littlest city in the Commonwealth of Virginia compared to their province, which is as big as Virginia. And Councilman Duncan was kind enough to welcome the delegation on behalf of the city, which we appreciated. And two hours of intense dialogue and discussion, and they're mid-career professionals learning public administration, and I'll share with you all their departments. It's quite fascinating the amount of diversity that came from environmental protection to technology to public safety, social security, commerce, youth palace association, and one of my favorites was a whole bureau of letters and complaints. But it was a great learning experience, I think, both ways to learn about their governments and the differences, and one of the things that they were very fascinated on is that the city didn't run its own hospitals, we did not dictate and control churches, and the mayor had the same equal vote as the other members of city council in running the city. So, it was a fascinating discussion, and I appreciated the opportunity. And they tell me they are going to be sending some photographs that they took during their visit, and we'll share them with council and the community. Thank you, Mr. Z, for that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Messner, and for Mr. Z and for Mr. Duncan for participating and bringing that.
Thank you to the staff. It was a significant investment of staff time, but a great program. I just got to participate at the very beginning in it, but every citizen would do to take that kind of Falls Church 101 course.
Is there anything else, or can I?
Of course.
On to the next thing?
Sure.
Okay.
Just one thing. The regularly scheduled and publicly noticed monthly meeting of council's Budget Finance Committee is tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 23rd at 7:30 in the Oak Room in City Hall. Any and all are welcome to attend this meeting where the CFO, Mr. LaConde, will be available to answer council members' questions on his FY '13, '14 year-end report and going-forward projections for the budget tax rate and CIP information that council first heard at its work session last Monday. I've invited Superintendent of Schools to send a representative, and she confirmed by email late today that Mr. Kimball will be able to attend that meeting, since one of the purposes is to begin in a serious way the conversation about our expectations for the budget tax rate and CIP heading into next year's process. Thank you.
If I could, there's one other item that was part of the amended agenda, which we have neglected to discuss, which is the appointments to the steering committee. And so, Mr. Shields, if you could, maybe just take a moment for that. It's something we have discussed previously, but it did not make it on the agenda tonight.
That is correct, and I apologize for that. On June 23rd, the council created the steering committee, and it called for two members of the school board, two members of the city council, a member of the EDA, and a member of the planning commission. That steering committee has been doing good work through the summer and has made a lot of good progress. But going back as a matter of housekeeping, we did not formally vote on the appointees. It had been the mayor and the vice mayor really since February all the way through, and that's continued on. The school board has taken the step of appointing an alternate as well, and so that prompted the discussion about having an alternate from the city council side as well. And so, with that, I would recommend that all three appointments could be made tonight if the council is willing, and we'll continue on with the work of the steering committee. And I would just note also that the steering committee is going to meet on Thursday at 7:30 a.m., which is its normal meeting time, and the council and the school board, as well as the EDA and the planning commission, are invited to come and urged to come to hear the presentation from RTKL on the space fit analysis that they've been working on over the past month and a half, that I think is very useful foundation for future planning for the site.
And so, the folks for this committee would be Mr. Snyder and myself and Ms. Conley as the alternate. So, that's what we'd be voting on right now. That is what we're going to be voting on shortly. So, if there are any comments or questions otherwise, I guess this is probably just be a voice vote, or can we do this, should we do this by roll call vote? I would imagine probably just a voice vote would be sufficient for this.
I think probably the prudent thing would be to go ahead and do a roll call.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and, do we have a motion to nominate those?
I move we appoint Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Snyder to the steering committee with Councilmember Conley as the alternate.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great, thank you. Is there any other business not on the agenda or council member comments? If not, why don't we go on to the meeting minutes? Are there any edits to the minutes from, looks like they're August 11th, if I'm correct? Any edits to those? Any errors?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan?
First, I'd just like to compliment our new city clerk, who I believe is bringing us her first set of minutes. They really, an excellent job at a difficult meeting. I mean, it's just, you know, a complicated issue, and a lot was said, and I just want to express my thanks for making me sound much more articulate than I'm sure I did and rendering the others' statements in good form, I think. So, thank you very much, Ms. Heath. The little fixes, and they're just little ones I can bring to your attention afterwards on lines 174, 411, 443, and 452. If you want me to give them to you now, I'm happy to do that.
Why don't you go ahead, just quickly and do it?
Okay. Line 174, Mr. Shields said that staff intended to have materials available August. I think, is that in August or by August? Well, at any rate, there's a, there's a word missing there. Line 411 is, "The town square concept could make Falls Church more of Little City if it done right." That sounds like...
That is what you said. Wasn't that what you said, Phil?
I'm pleased to see. I was afraid that that was something I said.
You were correctly quoted, I think.
In fact, Mr. Colby of Grove Avenue was rendered saying that, and anyway, so there's something missing there. Line 443, "Living in fear that I..." Nope, I didn't say that either. "He believed that demand on schools would increase whether or not the project..." period evaporated, apparently. At any rate, there's a word there. And Mr. Kamalik, "meaning of the word nimby meant until he moved." He did not know the meaning of the word nimby until he moved Falls Church. And I think that's it. The only thing I would ask, I guess if Mr. Snyder and Mr. Bruick are not here, could they have the leeway to make any changes to the minutes that they might want to after we've approved them? Is that something?
We can just wait until, do you want to wait until the next meeting?
That's up to the mayor.
We can do that, well, to, I guess, to get their comments and if they have any, and so, why don't we go ahead and do that?
We'll just put it on to the next.
Why don't you make the edits, Mr. Duncan has just said, and then we'll present them for the next meeting, we can approve.
Having to read them again. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there any other business that we have not addressed? Anything else from anyone? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.